Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting, November 12th. Just a couple announcements. This meeting is being videotaped and livestreamed. The Highway Department has announced the annual leaf pickup on the Brookfield Common in Village area will take place next week, November 17 through the 21st. And then be advised, there's a winter parking ban in effect from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Vehicles in the center of town will be ticketed or towed, or both. Also, snow and ice removal from driveway, sidewalks, or private property shall not be plowed, shoveled, or blown across any public way, street, or roadway. Warrants, fiscal year 2026-10, payroll $221,490.25. Fiscal year 2026-10, accounts payable $496,162.66. The first thing on the agenda is a tax...
Do you want to stand for the pledge?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What would I do without you, Sarah? So, the first agenda item is the tax classification hearing. I am going to remove myself from the Select Board, seeing how we only have two members of the assessors, so I will participate as an assessor. And Beth, do you mind?
Jerry.
Yep. All right. And I'm just gonna move to the audience while we do this.
Thank you, Patty.
Thanks for joining us this evening.
Why should I... Do I have to say my name?
Usually...
Patty King from the Assessor's Office.
Yep.
All right, I'm here.
Sorry, Patty.
I'm here for the tax classification hearing. It's held for the Board of Selectmen to vote on whether to have a single or split tax rate. Historically, Brookfield has always voted for a single tax rate. There are three tax policy options that the Board of Selectmen must decide and vote on. One is to establish the residential tax factor. Two is vote to adopt a residential exemption. And three, vote to adopt a small commercial exemption. Just want me to just go read through each one and then...
If you would, that'd be great.
I can't remember how we did it last year, okay?
Yeah.
So, establish the tax, the residential tax factor. If the town agrees to a single tax rate for all property classes, the residential factor would be one. A number lower than one would shift some of the tax burden from residential to commercial, industrial, and personal property. Usually, to be effective, a community must, should have at least 35% of its total property values as commercial, industrial, and personal property. Currently, Brookfield has 7.64% of the total property value broken down. Commercial, 2.833. Industrial, 0.793. Personal property, 4.018. And that's not enough to reduce the residential tax rate. It's the opinion of the Board of Assessors that Brookfield does not have enough commercial, industrial, and personal property value for any shift. A shift would certainly generate abatement applications and could dampen new commercial, industrial growth and construction moving forward. The Board of Assessors recommends a residential factor of one. More information on the shifting the tax rate is another page in your packet that you have if you want to look at it more. And in the past, the Board of Selectmen has, I mean, the Board of Selectmen has voted for a factor of one. Do you want to do each one and just want me to go through all three of them, or do you want to do each one separately?
Sarah, what's your preference? Do you want to vote these individually, or would you prefer, would you prefer to make a motion to vote these individually? Do you, would you prefer to read through them all and vote them as a block?
Just a block. We can just do a block.
Okay. Okay. So, the second one is to vote to adopt a residential exemption. A residential exemption shifts the tax burden from domicile property to non-domicile property. This would require a substantial percentage of non-domicile properties to have any effect. There are very few communities in Massachusetts that use this shift. It's usually larger metropolitan communities with large apartment populations, or communities with a lot of second homes, and resort communities such as Cape Cod. Brookfield does not have enough non-domicile properties to consider this option. In the past, the Board of Selectmen had voted not to adopt a residential exemption. And the third one is a vote to adopt a small commercial exemption. And a small commercial exemption would shift the tax burden within the commercial, industrial, and personal property class. Qualifying commercial properties must have a value of $1 million or less and 10 or fewer employees. This exemption shifts the tax burden onto all other non-qualifying commercial properties. The state of Massachusetts tracks eligible properties and provides lists to communities. There are no qualifying properties in Brookfield. In the past, the Board of Selectmen has voted not to adopt a small business exemption. Once you've voted on these three policies, the Board of Assessors will sign off in Gateway, and the town clerk will sign certifying this meeting. And then we can set the tax rate. Should be set hopefully by the end of the week.
Great.
If you have any questions, if anybody has any questions, they can contact me in the Assessor's Office.
Thank you. So, I'd like to entertain a motion to establish a residential tax factor of 1.0 to not adopt a residential exemption and to not adopt a small commercial exemption.
Show move.
Any discussion?
I got a question. What's our tax rate? What's the new tax rate?
The new tax rate is going to be $14.62.
$14.62?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty high.
It's down from last year.
Yeah, right now, it's $15.48.
Yeah, so...
$15.48 now, right?
Yeah, so it's going down...
86 cents.
86 cents. So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Patty. Any other questions? No?
Thank you.
No, it was very clear and complete. Thank you.
Item number two, Water Department steps to become in compliance with the auditor's recommendations. I'm gonna pass that over, seeing how the Water Department was not able to make it tonight. Number three, Town Accountant update. Our town accountant is here. Lori, do you mind coming up?
I had a couple things to go over with everyone. The first being, well, I guess we'll start with, now that we are in the absence of a town administrator, there has been a shift of some of his work pushed on to me. I feel like it's been split kind of between myself and Karen. Most of the work that has been shifted on to me is outside the purview of our contract because I am just the accountant. I expect no action to be taken tonight, but I will provide you all with what a finance director position looks like. My boss is willing to amend the contract for the remainder of the fiscal year. If this is something that you choose to look into, it would be at an added cost of $1,000 a month, which would give the town access to oversight of all departments that have financial matters, oversight of additional projects, attendance at additional meetings, which, if you remember, is outside the contract as well. So, I would be attending finance or advisory board meetings, Board of Selectmen meetings. It would also allow for preparation of the budget. All items that are currently outside of our current contract, but were tasks of the town administrator. I know we discussed it six years ago. At the request of the Board at that time, we decided not to go ahead because we kind of stabilized. We're kind of teetering back on needing it. We probably needed it for a little while, but just something to consider. So, I can provide that job description to you. You guys can make a review it and feel free to ask questions, but that's kind of where we are right now. I won't stop what I'm doing, but at some point, we may have to say, you know, we're doing way more than what we're doing.
Okay.
So, leading into that, somehow, I ended up doing the school roof project. I'm doing it. I've worked with Deb Boyd for nine years. She reached out. She needed a contact at the town to start taking care of everything because it needed to move ahead on the school's side. I agreed to work with her, which is fine. So, Deb and I have spoke a few times. The school was needing to get going. The school committee was worried because they couldn't get ahold of the town administrator. Deb wasn't able to get ahold of the town administrator. The school committee needed to get something on their agenda so they could make a vote, and we could get stuff started. I gave her the information she needed. I gave her the okay to go ahead. They needed immediate answers, so I went with it. I gave her the figure that we currently have in our account. We currently have $856,215.43 in the school stabilization account. According to the last conversation I had with Deb, she seems to think that is going to be enough on the town's side. We won't have to allocate any more money. She is fine with it sitting in the stabilization account. She doesn't see a need for a special town meeting at this time. Their goal right now is to not do anything with the school roof until the day after school ends for summer vacation. They don't want to be worried about winter. They don't want to be worried about cold temperatures. So, what they did decide to do was go ahead with the school committee making a vote. I believe they ended up voting on it last night. It was on their agenda. She said, if anything changes, she would have notified me, or, sorry, Monday night. They voted to allocate $100,000 that would be, because they're going to do it piece by piece. So, they've allocated the first $100,000 out of their school choice funds to fund the roof engineering and project management costs, so they could start putting forth an RFP. They were able to get a rough estimate from Wales, who just finished their project. Wales cost $75,000. Since ours was a slightly more expansive, they figured ours may cost up to $100,000. So, that's what they had the school committee vote at that time. We were able to get Wales's original document, so we could edit that. So, we have someone at the school, at the business office, is editing for us. The other issue we now have is we don't have a licensed or a certified procurement officer.
Can you put on the agenda or not?
So, Ron was.
Okay. So, so, number six on the agenda, one of the services that Roughly Consulting offers, because she is certified as a procurement officer, is to do, to actually act as a CP, as an interim CPO.
So, the school's gonna do it. Yep. So, Deb is a CPO, so she is going to put her name on all the documents. She figured she's not going anywhere. So, she might as well, she said, as long as we were fine with it, as her taking the lead on the project, rather than someone from the town, she was just gonna put her name on the documents. So, she said their current timeline for this is they're converting the documents right now that we got from Wales. They're gonna send out an RFP projected in December. This would allow us to receive proposals, award, and have the vendor be in spec development by the end of January. They'd like to send out a construction RFP by the first of March, would be ideal for summer construction. We can't award the project until the town has taken the appropriate votes. However, I think a May to June deadline to award would be best. She was just concerned that we get, need to get our money out of stabilization, but at least we'd have a dollar amount by then, and the school committee could vote on the remaining funds if needed.
So, they're, they're trying to, they want us to have a town meeting by May?
She said May to June, because she wasn't sure what ours was when she sent the email over. June, yes. Yep.
First couple weeks of June.
Right.
But they want to start the project the minute school gets out of that.
As soon as school ends. That way, they have the whole summer.
I think we may have to meet, or have the meeting sooner.
So, one thing I would like to just say, can we get on the next meeting agenda, voting to authorize Deb to act as our chief procurement officer specifically for the school budget?
Yep.
Because I think we're gonna have to put at least something in to allow that.
Yeah, I figured we had a little bit of time, just because it's not gonna go till December. Yep.
But I just want to make sure we get it on the agenda.
Yeah, and there's a state, state form we're gonna have to fill out.
Yes. Yep. Which will go right in her packet. That'll be signed by her as the CPO and us as the town, being the, because the bid will list town of Brookfield, and she's a school employee.
The, the other option would be is if we did want to...
Send, we can send, have some, right?
I'm sorry?
We could. What does consulting does for services?
Right. If you, if you want, I can get a quote from her for...
I'm, I'm totally good with the superintendent doing the...
Right, but that's not the only procurement we need to do during this interim period.
No, no, exactly.
So, so, the reason why, the reason to, the reason to check is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lori, because this is an area where I haven't gone through the training. You've gone through the training. You probably know way more about it. And if you would prefer to talk to it first, you can, feel free. But would the appropriate action be for us to authorize her specifically associated with this project, or would we have to more generally?
We authorize her specific for this project. Yes.
All right. And there's not an issue with doing, doing it piecemeal like that?
No, because like Sarah said, there is a form that will get filled out, and it'll be attached to the bid documents, because you have to show who the CPO is for each project. So, we do that.
For each project, okay. All right. So, if she'll do it for this, that's great.
And she's doing it basically for free, so...
So...
Yeah.
But I know that there is other procurement that we have to do, and it would be fundamentally probably to our interest. Do you want me to, do you want, do we want to put that, well, it's on the agenda for tonight to at least talk about. When we get there, we can talk about it, getting that more generally covered, so...
Yes, so, and Deb knew, as the 30B law states, in the absence of a chief procurement officer in town, the Board of Selectmen act as the chief procurement officer. So, one of you could have designated yourself to sign the form if we had no one available. So, that's the update on the roof. The other big things were just the budget, really. So, again, that's in the absence of a town administrator. We haven't really set the time when you want things to start going out. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, and kind of what you want to see happen for this year.
Do you have, did you put anything together for us to review, or?
So, everything, I could put something together, but everything that Ron sent out last year was mine.
Okay.
So, that has been something that Jeff, Tom, and I put together six years ago, and then Ron just kind of took it over...
Recycled it.
Last year. But it would be the same, hopefully, the same setup as we did last year. I just kind of wanted to figure out, like, what your timeline was, when you were hoping to send stuff out, when you were hoping to have things back.
Let me, I'm...
Much earlier than last year.
Well, that's kind of what I, I thought we had all agreed on is...
At one point, I had put together a calendar. Give me just a second and see if I can find it. And this predates even the, whatever you put together six years ago. I think I put this together like 12 years ago, but it was an appropriate cycle. On a high level, I would say I'd give the, my recommendation would be that the department heads should be able to submit their budget by the 15, like, whatever the, is the closest Thursday to the 15th of January.
So, you want them to submit them back in by the 15th? Okay. I think it's fair to give them, like, 30 days to three weeks to...
Well, and, and take Christmas out of it. That's the reason why I say the, the 15th of January, is because if you start counting weeks from now...
Christmas and New Year's and everything.
It's really only six weeks, right?
So, if I get everything out to people somewhere between the first and the 15th...
It really gives them basic six weeks, yeah.
That's fair. Did you want to have some sort of kickoff or department head meeting with people before I sent the requests out, or do you want me to just send the standard email template that we've, like, the letter that we've used in the past?
Yeah, that's kind of good, just sending that out.
Yeah, let's, let's...
I mean, they're all, with the exception of Kyle, everyone's been here for many years.
Yeah.
Right.
And I can talk to Kyle about it. I do want to, I'm gonna have, when, when is the next scheduled department head meeting?
The next scheduled department head is gonna be probably, well, not until August 15th.
Would you say it's for a day, January 15th?
It's usually once a month.
Back from everyone.
Yeah. Right. And then, and, and November's happened, what, last week?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I do want to talk to the department heads. So, the stuff can go out.
Okay.
But what I do want to do is make sure it goes out before the next department head meeting, so they can have the materials and look at it, and then we can talk through it during that department head meeting. I'd like to host that one. I'll work with it to get the time off from work in order to do that. Because I also want to talk with them regarding capital plan, because I have some ideas on... Historically, we've tried to have the panacea everything capital plan, and I think one of the things that we need to take a look at is we publish the portions that are ready to publish for the next town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So, if it doesn't have every department, it doesn't have every department, but that we start to get together the things that we know are, are legit and do the negotiation upfront with all the department heads about the give and take and priorities.
So, do you want me to send out with the budget request forms? Do you want me to send out, like, a capital request form?
Please.
Okay.
The same one that we usually use for the, the warrant articles, but let them know to put the fiscal year on top that they would expect to need it.
All right. And do you want them to, usually, I just have them level fund their payroll unless they're asking for additional hours, and not to put in a COLA?
Yeah, no COLA for the, for the math purposes.
Yep.
But if there, but if there is a specific performance-based or market-based rate change that they're looking for, they should provide two numbers. One is the level fund.
Level funded, yeah.
And one with what they feel is an appropriate market adjustment based on what they're facing in the area.
Okay. All right, I think that, that works. Jeff?
I don't want you to interrupt your floor, but I might just interject a couple comments, etc. Yeah? Yeah? Oh. Oh. Jeff Clark, 101 Brunel Avenue. The first thing, I just want to make sure that you had looked at the, sort of, the information I gave you, was like, a couple of months ago, as far as the, sort of, the, after the battle summary in July that the advisory committee had. And the only recommendations we really had was to try to move the warrant articles and everything up to conform with, with the budget, so we're not having that sort of disconnected situation, which I think you'll, with a capital request, might happen. But the two things that we've always fallen apart on, as far as, which is why I would hope that when, if whoever is at the department head meetings where the information is out there, is that there's a clear statement as far as what the expectations of the Select Board are that year, just sort of damps down any gossip rumors, whatever, because we've had all sorts of craziness go on, which makes advisory committee's job and everyone's job more important, or more difficult over those between January and, you know, March, May, April, et cetera. And again, the communication is very important. So, I'm hoping that maybe we have one extra joint advisory Select Board meeting, like, maybe, you know, at, at the beginning, once the information comes back, and then midpoint, and then, and so, everyone is sort of in sync, so we're not, you know, trying to catch up at the last minute and, and something falls through the cracks.
Right.
And that's basically it. I mean, I think we basically have run it pretty well, and I think the information that we had in our summary, pretty much, those, those were the key points, is just make sure that, and also, that the department heads communicate to us in writing what, what it is, if there's anything that is different other than level funding. We need some, this advisory committee, and also on the budget sheets, need some written description of what's going on. Because, again, we don't want to keep going back and forth and back and forth, you know, trying to clarify little points. You know, we'd like to have it all, you know, say, the police chief wants XYZ, okay, put it all out there, and, you know, make the case, rather than having us trying to go back and forth. I'm, I'm not picking on the police chief. That's the first one that just came to my mind, so, that's always what we have. And, and the planning committee was the only one that ever put together a real nice summary of everything, and it was a very small amount, but it was very nicely written, so we all, we never had any questions on it, right? And, and, you know, though, as far as with the fire department, we're always trying to get things pulled out, and, and we always have to go back. So, anything to help in that situation would, would help us to, I think, to move the process.
I can stress in the letter to make sure people use the comment section at the bottom of the request form, because I have that comment section. I'll just stress that people should be using the comment section.
Right. I mean, or, or again, it's like, if, if you're asking for something and there's no, there's no justification, well, we're not gonna recommend it. You know, you gotta, gotta justify it. And the, the other, well, that, that would be it for now, but I, I think the calendar, which we've had, you know, Marty's been doing that project, whatever it's called, format, so you could, you could just use that one also, which, which Ron had committed to give, to update it in November, but I guess he's, he's, he's gone, so hopefully he'll do it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else, Lori?
The only last thing I had was, we still have an issue with the postage machine. So, that has kind of fallen off of Ron's to-do list. I brought this up, I don't know if anyone remembers. It was over a year ago, might have actually been a year and a half ago, and the Select Board at that time had let me reach out to Michelle Randazzo at KP to get her legal opinion, because somehow, we got locked in to a five-year contract a couple of years ago. We are still within our five years. Michelle, at that time, said we could get out of the contract, and I had let Ron know, and he said he would take care of it. It has never been taken care of. We are still being billed quarterly, and on, to the tune of we are being billed quarterly, the postage company also owes us $1,500, because at one point, we put postage in the machine. Now, the machine is broken. We can't even use it. So, they owe us $1,500 in postage, but it's technically a second part of their company that is billing us for the machine rental. We just want the machine to be gone. Ron said he would handle it. It's not being handled. If it is okay, can I reach back out to Michelle and have her draft a letter that just kind of goes in the box with the machine? Because she said we could get out of the contract, and we're not out, and it's costing all these departments money every month, and no one's using it because it's broken. And it needs to go.
I didn't contain a motion to, for the Board to have Michelle write a letter and send it back, if she's, if she's at comfortable, you know, at conference.
So, I'm gonna, let me, can you mind if I phrase it a little more generally?
No.
So, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Lori to take suitable action to terminate the contract relative to the postal machine, including the con, you know, including any need to contact KP specific to that matter.
Perfect.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for doing that, Lori.
You're welcome. And that was all I have. Other than that, everything's going pretty smoothly, so...
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Number four, Town Hall windows.
Harry, number four, town hall windows.
Do you have a handout?
Yeah, I do, yeah. Yep, we all have it.
A little typo on it, but that's, that's not material.
We're gonna let it go. So I want to thank you, Kermit Eaton and Sean Mulligan. Thank you for the work you've put in. And I really want to stress, uh, Matt Bensfield, that he's put a ton of time.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
So, uh, I, I guess what we've done is, is a recap of the bids we've received. And, uh, the decision is, um, do we want to go ahead with the storms? And if you do, which ones do you, which one would you consider here? Our recommendation is window inserts. And if you've got any questions on any of them, we're here to answer them.
I don't have any questions. I've met with you a couple of times while it was going on, and I think it's a great solution, a temporary solution. And I still think we need to do a permanent solution, but this is a great first step, yeah, so.
I would, I would say that it's, it'll be more permanent than you think. I think that, uh, they, they seem to have long-lasting, you know, based on talking to the insert people, they, they have long-lasting benefits. They even say, both the insert people say that they have better efficiency rating than pane glass.
Yeah, they do.
They, they do, okay, I, I didn't take that, I didn't put that in there because I didn't accept their testimonials. But, uh, and they also say they're better noise-wise, which is surprising to me, so.
Yeah, the only downsides would, to me of the, you know, what we have here, there's a little distortion in, in the view. And, you know, some concerns about fragility, but I think we're trying to think of solutions about that. You know, that moving them around too much, you might knock a hole in them or whatever, you know, that, that kind of thing. Of course you can do that with glass, you can break them, you know, so, so it's.
Just as an example, uh, we were here today and took out this window here just to see how you'd take it out. Took us a minute, two minutes to pop it out. So you'll, you're, you're gonna need to understand, or at some point you're gonna decide where you want to put in air conditioning wind units, because you're gonna have to take out that bottom window to re- put the, uh, the air conditioning unit in. Or if you want any kind of airflow, you may want to take out the bottom unit. What we're proposing is that instead of, see that, that centerpiece that goes up? We would make it thicker, and when you took out the bottom window, you would just move it up and pop it into the top. So you don't have to start, you don't have to take it out and stop.
That's a good idea.
So you just take it out, boom, pop it up there.
Because the less they're handled, the longer they're gonna last.
Yeah, yeah, and there's, you know, I don't know, there's five or six or seven, uh, air conditioning windows in the.
Town hall, roughly, yeah.
And, but unless you want airflow or something like that. So, if, if it's approved, I, I guess we had a couple of questions. We want to make sure that the bids qualify under thirty B, and so that we're not qualified to do that. We, we're gonna have to measure all the windows in great detail. We'll need access. We're gonna repair and secure all existing windows and storm windows. Some of them are very loose, some need insulation.
Yeah, they need stops, they need sash inserts, they need ropes and so.
And all this will be done with volunteers.
Yep.
And so, at some point, we'll have to decide whether the air conditioners are gonna go. We're gonna, we'll be painting the divider in matching paint. And getting back to what Lori was talking about, somebody's gonna have to tell us how we order these things. I have no idea how to do it.
Okay.
So you don't have a purchasing agent.
Okay. Um, I, I, I think it's a great solution, and I can't thank you guys enough for the work that you've put into it. And it, and it, and it's the best of all the, the temporary options, in my opinion. So go ahead, Beth.
Well, I was, I was gonna say, that's part of the conversation, right? So the, part of the conversation is, um, when we, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I, I'm sorry, Sean, I, I know, I know better. Let me, let me, let me talk a little louder. So, um, I, I think we have a couple of questions in front of us today, okay? And a couple of potential follow-up items for us, right? So, um, do we need to make a decision about what material? And I'm, and a lot of these questions actually, just because at least you, you're one step ahead of the rest of us at least getting the training, okay? Is, um, all of these options, including the most expensive one, which is at eleven thousand dollars, are under, you know, the fifty thousand dollar mark, right?
It's, so ten to fifty, you have to get three quotes.
Right.
So.
And under ten?
You don't have to get anything.
You don't have to get anything, okay? So, and I guess, is there any interest in going with glass versus Plexi or the film?
Is there any what?
Any interest or any, any, any prevailing reason, other than it being a local company? And, um, more of a feeling of permanency, though, like you said, glass can be just as perishable.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Sarah? What did, what you?
I agree, yeah. I'm okay with either, really, but my concern would be the glass, too. I, I don't know, I feel like it's more.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
What the concerns with glass?
If they have to.
Lot of work, heavier, so.
We're talking about the ACs, if they're gonna have to take down the glass for the AC, like to be able to put in an AC, I just feel like you have more of a chance for it to break.
And then storing them.
Yeah, and also where are we gonna store the glass? And then, you know, things happen, you could just go downstairs, it could just break on its own if we store it downstairs. If it's not, yeah, it's heavier also, so we're gonna have to have volunteers be able to store it either upstairs, downstairs, or around here. So.
So are we good with the film or the?
Yeah, I'm okay with the film.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there are nice things about glass, uh, you know.
Yeah.
The, particularly the visibility, I think it's very nice. They're more complicated, more expensive to install. You know, this is, this is lightweight, so it's held in essentially by pressure. If we have glass, we're gonna have to have all spring clips all along and all that.
I have a question.
Yes.
The install, the thirty-two hundred dollars, is that every time we're gonna have to ins- like?
That, that's.
Or is that a one-time?
That's the hardware.
That's the, a one, one time, and that's because it's per trailing wage.
Okay, okay.
You're talking, I'll guarantee you glass.
Yeah, like, yeah, I mean, they're heavy, so like, are we gonna have to pay somebody to install them every single ti- time is my question?
No.
Yes.
They're not, they're not that heavy. We're talking about, because either way, we'd be talking about a two, two piece.
Two-piece, okay, okay.
So that, that pain isn't, I mean, it's a little awkward to handle, but it's not anything you'd have to have a professional do.
Do, okay.
I mean, I could, you know, old man, I could take that, I could take that window out and, and put it back in.
Put it back in, yeah, it's similar to the ones, there's a couple on my house that I take out and put in for.
Okay.
It's just that the initial installation is more complex with the glass. That's all.
Okay, all right. And I'm still good with the window inserts.
Yeah, so, and, and I, just to be frank, I'm, I'm good with the window inserts as well. I think what we do need to consider is this covers all kind of the normal windows mostly. That will leave us, at the current estimate, that would leave us, I think, still roughly nineteen thousand dollars of the earmark funds from the state. So I think what we, we would have, if we go with the inserts for, to keep the employees comfortable, right? And to lower our heating bill this season, right? This doesn't include the ballroom windows, correct?
No. On the second floor, on the cle- board of health, town administrator's office, and the radio station.
Right, so it's all the habited portions of the building.
Those great big windows, none included.
Absolutely, okay, I just wanted to make that clear. However, this would get us through this winter, it would be a solution that would be good for a, a number of years because a lot of them can be left up year-round, and it will help keep cool as well as keep warm.
Yeah.
Right? And then I think our next step would be to start to look at what our options are for the big windows.
Exactly.
Right? But this will at least get the employees in a better shape.
Well, we have additional funds as well, right?
That's what I'm saying.
So, the eight thousand plus the nineteen thousand, right?
Right.
So we could then start with some permanent solutions.
Right.
Yeah, and the earmark, if we don't use all of the money, it goes away.
Right, so, so that's why, that's why I'm thinking what we, what this would be, is this would be a solution for the office spaces and the commonly-used spaces for this winter season, and as long as we needed them. Because you're not gonna do this whole building for twenty-five thousand dollars anyway.
No, no.
Right, but it'll give us an option to then pursue looking at what we can do.
Yeah, up there, yeah.
In that up, up there, so.
You know, and part of the thinking would be too, uh, you know, hey, I, I, we think it'll work out, but if it doesn't give the savings we want and have all the results we want, you don't want to put all our eggs in one basket and, you know, think about the next.
Right, and we still, and we still have six months in next year to see what we need to, see, see what we need to pursue.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I'll make a motion that we, uh, pursue getting the window inserts similar to the ones that are currently installed for the balance of the windows.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
One thing, um, I'll have the earmark contract for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
How, how, or what do the two gentlemen here, how, how good is that plastic gonna hold a period of time?
It'll hold up good, Dave, unless nobody pokes it with a knife. But other than that.
Year after year.
Oh, yeah, yes, I mean, it, if you look at the testimonials, they, they put these in a lot of historic buildings, a lot of municipal buildings. But they are, again, if you poke it with a, a, a sharp-eyed object. But other than that, they will, they will hold up as.
I understand durability holds a period of time.
They will hold up as good as, as the glass will if it, they're not abused.
Yeah, and if one does get damaged, it's relatively easy to get replaced.
Yeah, and, and inexpensive.
Yeah, that's what I meant, right, yeah.
Order of magnitude is like, uh, that, that big window there is, uh, is three hundred, total of three hundred dollars. That, that, both, both sides of that window's three hundred dollars, roughly three hundred dollars. Yeah.
But that was, but that was with the shipping, and the shipping is when we.
Ninety-three dollars.
And all the stuff, everything.
Right, but, but you could ship, you could ship like a dozen.
But overall, it's gonna be cheaper because when we.
Yeah, you ship like fifteen seventy-nine to three dollars.
When we order a bunch of them together, the shipping price isn't gonna go up so bad.
Yeah.
All right.
One quick point, um, just to be clear, you guys can't go ahead with the vendor until that earmark has been fully signed? Because I haven't seen it yet fully signed, so that's, that's not an executed contract, I would say.
No, 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 we haven't gotten the contract yet.
Right, so you can't go ahead and pay the vendor until that's.
But even if we use the town hall improvement account.
You'll have fourteen thousand dollars, so you wouldn't have enough to fund.
Yeah, it's six thousand, it's six thousand dollars for the total.
Okay, I didn't see anything, so I didn't know how much you were.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's six thousand dollars.
Okay, so if you're gonna use that money instead, then we would have that.
So we have, we'll have two options hopefully by the end of next week, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, no, we'll get it, we'll have the contract signed. Hopefully, we're gonna sign it next week, next meeting, and then it will have to go back to the state.
Okay.
They'll, yeah, for them to sign, then they'll have to cut, like actually cut the earmark and gotta, gotta, gotta.
So what's the turn, so at what point, is it once we sign or once the state signs and returns, or once we have them?
State signs and returns.
Yes.
Because earmarks are not actually guaranteed ones.
Yes.
They're kind of wishless.
So then I, I propose that to get this moving right away, that we use the town hall improvement account to. Are you good with that, Beth?
Yeah.
Sorry, you're good?
Yeah, because I don't know how, they could, it could be till, before, till Christmas.
I'll make a, yeah, and, and we want this up sooner rather than later, because it's, because it's really, it's already, it's the season.
The lead time on these windows is probably three weeks.
Right.
Yeah.
So, again, getting back to what do we have to do to put the, the package together so you can submit it to the vendor?
So, so, so we don't, because, because it's under, because it's under the threshold, we basically just need them to invoice us, I think. It really comes down to that. So I'll make a motion that we authorize the use of the town hall improvement funds for the purposes of this invoice.
So we had a motion out there already and seconded.
Right, but it, the motion that was out there and seconded was for pursuing the film, and I thought we voted it.
No, yeah, we did, but no, not where the funds came from.
But not where the funds came from. So, so I'm, I'm making a motion to authorize the expenditure of town hall improvement funds to, um, to do the window inserts.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, one, one of the, so let's assume we get all the window measurements and get everything together to submit to the inserts. Where do I go to get the information to where to bill it and?
They, they just need to send us an invoice, right? If they send us an invoice, then, uh, it goes to Lori, right?
Lori, can we talk to you about that? Okay.
I'll be in the office, if you want to be in the office, I'll be in the office next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
Yep.
A week from this thir- that.
A week from tomorrow, so I was there today.
All right, so we will, we will have all the documentation to you by next Thursday.
Is, is the vendor willing to ship the material without being paid?
He has to.
He has to.
That's the, but that's where I'm going with this. Because it's a municipality, they'll probably.
I, I think they, based on the conversation, when we bought this one, he said, "Don't worry about it." Like, a credit card, he said, "I'll, I'll ship it, don't worry about it," and so.
Yeah, if they do other municipal municipalities, then he should be able to invoice us.
Yeah, typically they're not.
I will confirm, I'll confirm that.
I, I just wanted to make that clear.
A lot of times we can give, if vendors are wary, we can give them, uh, it's called a quick contract, just stating that you're purchasing this material, so they may even have a quick contract. It'll have like a purchase order, and it'll have all the materials we're purchasing, and at the bottom.
It'll give net terms.
It'll have net terms, and we'll just scribble it out, we'll put net, um, net thirty after installation, and then I'll sign it, guaranteeing payment thirty days after delivery and installation. If they want something signed, I'll allow them to sign it.
Actually, we're installing, they're not installing, so it'd be, so it'd be a pod-delivery.
Okay, you've accepted the responsibility as purchasing agent. Okay, all right, thanks for your time.
Thank, thank you again.
Okay.
Harry, number five, town administrator hiring process. Beth, I think this was you that wanted to.
It was, it was me, so we have a lot of applications before us. Historically, and we're kind of behind the power curve on this, historically, we've actually appointed a search committee for positions where high volume of resumes, high requirements, um, in, in the interest of allowing i- initial interviews to be private, because as the board of selectmen, we're not able to hold executive session frontline interviews. You know, and, and really our options, our options would be if we wanted to start the search somewhat privately and then bring the, the final interviews to the board. Either one of us gets appointed to do the work, or we, we find and appoint a committee to do the screening, come up with a recommendation, and get it in front of us. Or we can all just independently go through the resumes and, again, have somebody do the phone screens and then just decide on the interviews based off of, you know, our individual review of the interviews. We'd have to meet in open session to discuss who we wanted to bring in and then just do public interviews. So I just, I wanted to put it out there that if we're gonna start acting on this, we need to decide how we're gonna go about doing it.
Okay. Any other thoughts, Sarah?
I don't know.
Putting you on the spot here.
Yeah, I don't know.
I've looked at the applications. I've not yet seen one that was really, uh, that I, that I thought was a viable candidate.
Oh, glad you said it first.
I mean, there was one recently that it came in, but after, if you kind of look what they're making, what we're willing to pay and where they've applied elsewhere, I think it would be, they would just use us for a temporary job. what we're willing to pay, and where they've applied elsewhere, I think it would be, they would just use us for a temporary job and then they would be gone, so it doesn't seem, doesn't seem like we have a candidate yet.
That just puts us in a position where we have time to set up a committee, if that's the approach we want to take, so.
Okay.
I don't know.
Jeff, do you mind coming up? Sorry, I, I don't know whose hand was up first, but I, I saw Jeff.
I was on the, the last committee, and I thought it went very smoothly. I mean, we quickly, I mean, Mary Lou did a phenomenal job in, in organizing, administering all the paperwork and everything else, and the members on the committee asked good, good solid questions of the people that came to interview, and I think the three candidates that we actually presented to the select board were the three most viable. I mean, that's not to say that the other, I don't know, fourteen or fifteen, probably, I'm not sure we even, I think we gave six an interview, and the other ones were just, so, there should be a couple, hopefully, if this search goes on long enough, or the, the process goes on long enough, that come forward. I'm, I'm very hopeful, because the first one, I think we had, when Kelly won, or was appointed, I think there were very few candidates, and it wasn't really, there just wasn't, weren't a lot. So I'm hoping that's not the case this time, but I think with the, I think it was six or seven members we had, really, I thought it was a very group, and I think they all asked very good questions, and it saved the select board a significant amount of time, so then at that point, they had, you know, whatever, an hour each with, or half hour each with the three candidates, and, you know, then they made, you know, you guys made, made the decision. But all that time and effort that went into it, I think a volunteer committee could handle it if, if the same members are, are available or comparable. I mean, if Mary Lou's willing to serve on a committee again, I mean, she, she just really made it very smooth for everyone. So that, that's my feeling, I mean, I, I know you guys have enough on your plates right now to be able to go through, if, if a number of qualified candidates come out, I mean, it does take a lot of time to, to interview and, and, and then get everything organized and set up, so, that's just my, my opinion, but based on the, the previous ones. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good point, but, I don't know, my only thing is, we don't have a lot of candidates right now. So, I feel like if, if we had fourteen or fifteen different applicants, or we get to that point, then I think I'm open to the search committee, but right now, we're not even at the point of interviewing one.
I feel the same way.
So I feel like if, if, if we, like, we could interview the one, you know what I mean, or one, one of us could interview rather than the whole committee, if it's just one or two candidates. But if we get a storm of them, then I'd be open to the committee, that's why I kind of want to sit on it and think about it.
Well, and, 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 again, we don't have to decide it tonight, right? But my thought was, is one, think about it, two, it's easier to have the committee and not use it than need the committee and not have it.
Yeah.
Okay? It's, it's a rough time of year, a lot of people aren't looking at job changes right before Thanksgiving, right? End of year, they don't even, most people who are job hunting don't even think that, that postings are real this time of year, because they think it's just evergreen postings or what have you, because they've been burnt before, I know I've been in that boat, right? So, you know, there's a, there's some perception there as well.
Yeah.
And I also think we need to be cautious about prejudging somebody as overqualified, because, again, my own experience in the job market, I have a friend, I got hired down at Pratt and Whitney probably three or four years ago, that he was stuck in the middle, where he was, like, not perfectly qualified for certain things, and, and considered overqualified and not even getting the interview for other things, and I think that there are, there are resumes in that pile, that one of us should at least reach out to them and see if they're serious about coming to Brookfield. Because I think to, I think it's very easy to overfilter and not give people the opportunity to get face-to-face with you, so, you know, whether it's you, Sarah, or me, I've done an awful lot of hiring in a, granted, it's been more in a corporate environment than here, okay? But if, if y'all would be interested, I'm willing to put the time in to do phone screens on the buckets that we have right now, even if y'all think that there's not an applicant, just to find out if we maybe have a diamond in the rough that, that we're missing on paper, so. And I can bring that back to the board the next meeting, if you care for me to do that.
I, I look, there was two people that wanted to speak, I'm going to let Maureen speak first. Do you mind coming up, Maureen?
I agree, sometimes overqualified candidates are not looking to keep going up the ladder. They're looking to plateau or take a step back from their responsibilities, so it's always good. But the executive sessions in the committee that did the hiring have never been released. So, there's a lot of minutes posted, but there's no executive sessions that have been approved and released. So, for the public, at this point, there is no reason to keep them under executive session, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to remind you guys.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Lori?
I served on the last two.
You did?
I did, I was on the last two, because last time we just reappointed the exact same committee. Our committee was great, I will give you that.
The committee was great.
It was great, we only had one shift from the first committee to the second, and it was just Jeff replacing Tom, because they were our advisory board person, and it, Tom was gone, and then it was Jeff. Our committee was great, I will say, however, you know, we didn't have a lot of candidates when we chose Kelly. We did have more viable candidates when we chose Kelly. We had a ton of candidates last time, however, we had none that had town administrator experience.
Right.
I really think, after doing this twice, we chose the best option, both times. Our last round, when we chose the prior town administrator, we chose the best option of having no experience.
Yeah.
I really think we need to take our time, whether you choose to do a committee or choose to do them yourselves, is take our time and not rush to just get a body in here this time, because we've had two people that technically neither has fulfilled their contract. I mean, Kelly left us, you know, right towards the end, a few months, but Ron's midway through. So I think to take our time and find the right person this time. You know, I did hear through the grapevine that one of our, our not-chosen people from last time may have reapplied, just because he was chosen by a, a surrounding community, and he may have reapplied, maybe not remembering that we didn't pick him in the last round, but, so obviously, we wouldn't want anyone to re-interview that person if we didn't choose him the last round, and didn't get any better this round, I wouldn't think. But, you know, I wouldn't mind also if you wanted just help. I work in a lot of communities, so I know a lot of people, so just quick names, I could tell you yes, no. But it's also this time of year, a good town administrator's not leaving their job either.
And if they are.
If they are, there's a reason.
There's a reason.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lori.
Yeah, most of those contracts run with the fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, not to compare, but Rutland's looking for a town administrator, and they have three candidates, and they all have less than.
Three or four times.
Yeah, but they all have less than one-year experience, and that's, and they went through a company, they hired a consulting company, yeah, so they're.
Paid out real money and still don't have good candidates.
They can't keep anyone over their age.
No, no, but, yeah, it's slim picking.
So.
All right.
So, um, and this is one where I'm asking for pergi-, uh, permission instead of forgiveness. Is there any objection to me reaching out to some of the resumes that we've already received? Just to do a quick phone screen.
Nope, I don't have any objection to it.
No, I don't have any objection.
Okay, thank you.
Number six, roughly consulting additional services, Beth, you wanted to talk about this as well.
Well, to Lori's point. Though I need to work on esophagus trachea decisions here. One of the ways we can not rush the town administrator decision would be by ensuring that critical functions are covered without a town administrator, okay? I'd say one of the critical areas, and probably the one that gets the trickiest and can get us in the most hot water the fastest, is the chief procurement officer.
Yeah.
And it happened that when I was talking to Becky about Gay Road, where she's helping us out, she said, you know, she, she just introduced herself and talked a little bit about what her wheelhouse is and some of the other services that she provides, right? And one of them is, is being like an interim chief procurement officer, because she's got all the certifications from the state and what have you. So I just wanted to bring it forward, did we want to go out to quote those, like, maybe just quote, like, a, a six-month period of time with her and anybody else that we could find that does that type of work? Or get at least a rough, I call a ROM a rough order of magnitude from her about, like, you know, what would three months of chief procurement officer coverage look like, right? Or would it be by bid, or at least get like what the, what the financial construct would be for it? And did you want me to do some market research on, like, what the options would be for getting like a three- or six-month coverage for chief procurement officer?
If you're willing to put the time in, from my perspective, I, I, it, it doesn't hurt us one bit, right? So if you're willing to do that, thank you for putting the time.
Okay, so, but I, but that came up in a conversation with her, and so we at least have one option, and then we can check what some of the other options are as well.
Yeah, and I kind of want to, not now, but I kind of want to get with Lori and also Karen to figure out what they're doing right now, has TA, kind of Lori said that she's kind of been acting and doing stuff outside the contract, so I kind of want to get a list together. And then maybe solicit, I guess, that as a, as a whole, too, to see.
Is that something you would be putting into your paperwork when you submit?
So I am not certified CPO, generally, the accountant reviews it.
Okay.
I am incredibly familiar with the state law, I'm just not certified.
Yeah.
Which is why, in the absence of a CPO, the accountant reviews the documents.
And the select board signs it.
Signs it.
Yeah.
Um, which is, I mean, would be my suggestion during this interim, rather than pay someone. If we had something that, you know, really you didn't want to review or sign, you could solicit someone else.
Yeah.
We may even be able to ask the school for a CPO signature, you know. We've traded hands on other situations, I, you know.
I mean, lastly, we have town council to get us through it as well, but.
No, I'm okay with the CPO, I'm just thinking of other stuff besides the CPO that she could possibly do, and that's why I said get the list kind of together, like, what, what else do we need besides the CPO? Like, is that the only thing that we're going to need for additional services, or are we going to need other stuff?
In the absence of a TA?
Yeah.
You don't have just an absence of a TA, you have an absence of a full-fledged assessor.
Yeah, yeah.
The issue that Hallie would have brought on the finance director position was the absence of major departments.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so, yeah, not just thinking about CPO, I'm perfect, I, I think we should, I think you should definitely reach out to, to Roughly, but I would kind of want to know, does she do anything besides just the CPO?
She has a bunch of, she has a bunch of other services, yeah.
Get the list together to see, like, what, what exactly they're both doing, to see if it's worth having, you know, one person doing it, like, roughly doing all of it, and getting a quote that way, too.
Okay.
Jeff, do you mind coming up? I should ask Lori to come up, but she got by, but I try to make it a policy every time.
Yeah, this is, this is probably common sense, but maybe, maybe I'm just not hearing it correctly, but, I mean, the town administrator has a job description with all the responsibilities, you just need to go down the checklist and say, all right, well, who's doing what to whom right now? Whoever has that checklist, either Karen or one of the three of you should be able to figure it out if there's some gap. I mean, I know there's a lot of stuff going on, but.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
If everyone has an assignment, then, yeah.
Yeah, we need to figure out, yeah, who's going to do what.
But it, it's more just an organizational, just making sure someone doesn't lose that piece of paper with the responsibilities on, and who's doing what.
Yeah, and we need to kind of make it clear, yeah, because like, Lori, like I said, Lori just picked up the school roof as a, as a favor, but.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so you're going to get that information and bring it back to the board?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you, Beth. All right, number seven, in our packet, special municipal employee vote. The one, the one that I did see that wasn't in the packet was the assessor. Karen said that she forgot to put that in, but.
Well, we can add it to the top.
Tried working on months and months ago, and for some reason, it, it got missed.
Yeah, and I want to thank Karen.
If we missed anything, we can.
For doing the list, because I know she was working on this, the list as of this morning, trying to get it together, so, thanks, Karen, for getting it together.
So, in reviewing some of the municipal employees, that there have been some that have made it through, but not all, and this is a more complete list, and, but I, I suspect there'll be more beyond this. But this would be a good start.
Yes, Mike looked it over, too, and he thought it was, but obviously not.
So one question was to whether we consider just saying that any town employee is a special municipal employee, but.
I think we wind up running afoul of state law if we do that.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so, but, but that's why we started this list, we get this done, and then we move forward. With any others that come along, we, we plug them in in a smaller form.
So I, I think the one thing we probably could have done with, with this list, that we could, I think one thing we could get away with would be aggregating all the administrative assistants and clerks. So that if we, because I don't think we mentioned here the all boards clerk, but I think that would fall under this as well.
Oh, yeah, it's right here at the end.
Oh, it is, okay, I was looking at it, it was alphabetical except the bottom, sorry about that.
Yeah, but the bottom. Okay, the police admin assistant.
Police is there.
Yeah, the security officer, this would be taken.
Yeah. Well, you know, here, here's the deal, what I would like to do is, let's vote the list plus assessor tonight, and then if we find some errors and omissions, we can always.
Add to it later, yeah, I agree.
All right, so that, I make a motion that we make the, make the positions as printed on the document today, and if anybody wants a copy of it, because I don't want to read the thirty-some-odd titles that's on there, it, with the addition of assessor, uh, as special municipal employee positions pursuant to general law, chapter two sixty-eight A, the conflict of interest law, that feels like there's, it's missing a section or something.
Well, that came from, that, that's what Michelle basically said under her email.
I think it gets the gist of it.
Yeah. Okay, yep, that's the motion, so.
Second.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain. All right. Number nine, we're going to pass over that, there's no need for us to do anything in reading the town bylaw, or it's all on the advisory board.
Forgot eight.
Oh, eight, uh, signed technology contract, I'm sorry?
Could, uh, could I get a clarification on the bylaw?
So, in between town meetings.
Let, let me back up, because I took one out of order, so.
Yeah, we're backing up, we're going with the eight.
We're going number eight, for some reason, I, I didn't see that, so, signed technology contract with an every.
Motion to approve the, uh, an every master services agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a question, what's, 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 what's this mean?
It's our contract with Jacob to continue the.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay, that's fine.
All right, now, number nine, advisory committee appointment. So, did you find that in the bylaw?
Yes, may I come up and share?
Sure, yeah, yeah, why not? Just put your mic on, Steve.
Steve Carmen, fifty-seven A Molasses Hill. At the beginning of the meeting, I heard some discussion about, between Jeff and Rich, about the bylaws and who has the requirements of making appointments for the advisory committee. about the bylaws and who has the requirements of making appointments for the advisory committee. And by the Brookfield general bylaws, it's section, it's chapter four, section three. I can read it if you'd like.
Sure, go ahead.
Whenever a vacancy occurs in said committee, said vacancy shall be filled by said committee by the appointment of a person to serve until the close of the next annual town meeting, when the select board in office shall appoint, in the same manner as the original appointment, a successor to fill out the unexpired term of the person whose office has been vacated. So is your interpretation from that, that the vacancy shall be filled by said committee? That gives the advisory committee?
So the advisory committee has the unique position within the town, that in between the annual appointments, they have the authority to appoint their own members?
And then come the next annual town meeting, then you will do the appointment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I got.
Did you read it the same?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I do now reading it and just making sure, but just want to make sure that was in the clear, so.
Yeah, but that's how that's been interpreted, at least for the last decade or so.
Okay.
Right, so then Tom will be appointed officially, whatever, for the last, for that town, for that-
Tom, I mean, do you mind coming up again, Jeff? I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, so, did you all already vote him on? Okay. So if you voted him on, he just needs to go see Mike and get sworn in.
He's sworn in.
Karen, can you drop the paperwork? But Jeff would sign it.
It's already, it's already done. So, so that's why I had this discussion with Jeff before the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
That's why I'm skipping it over.
Right, but so I'm just clear, is it so next June somehow, then?
When the appointments are done, he would then be submitted.
So, yeah, so basically, if you guys-
Because we all have three-year terms, so he's just filling out Sarah's unexpired term.
So it'll be the same timeframe that Sarah's term was?
Right.
That's the amount of time he would have.
So whatever her end date was supposed to be, that's what he's appointed until?
Yep.
But according to that, though, the select board at the next town meeting has to confirm that, or appoint it, or, that's what I'm confused.
After the town meeting, which is usually, it was always in May. Now, I know it's been later.
Yeah.
But after that, then the appointment would continue to Sarah's term. So if it was a two-year, then he's going to get one year in June when we do the appointments. Because one year's transpired.
So when we redo the appointments, he would get whatever, he would be on whatever cycle Sarah was on for the three-year appointment?
Right, so, all right, so we don't have to do-
So your appointment, your appointment-
So for another year and a half, we don't have to do anything?
No, that's not so.
No.
Yeah, you don't have to, but at the next time, when we do appointments in June, he will then be appointed by the select board for the end of the term that he's filling.
Okay, so then, do I nullify Karen, or should we keep track of it?
She'll have the paperwork for you, for you to sign.
Okay, thanks.
All right, no problem.
It's all good.
All right. Number 10, council on agent appointment, Sandra Kucha. Can I have a motion for that?
Show moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Cultural council appointment, Elizabeth Olson, I have a motion?
Show moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Number 12, resignation of the board of health clerk, Deb Breon.
Motion to accept with regrets.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Resignation of Sharon Ashley, our town treasurer.
Okay. Motion to accept with regrets, but let's discuss.
Okay, second. Any discussion?
So she gave us some time, but because it is end of year-
Pretty short time.
It's still, it's less time than it looks like on paper. So do we have our posting back out yet?
No, we do not, because I wasn't sure how you wanted to do that, if you wanted to-
There is no-
We want to post immediately.
Sure, we want to post it like yesterday. Yes.
Treasurer needed, needed, not needed.
Yeah.
Desperate.
So do you want, how do you want to do it? You want to do just plain treasurer without the HR?
Just the treasurer without the HR, because we have AJ.
Well, I think we need to explore both. I think we're gonna possibly catch a bigger fish with a bigger amount for the position.
Yeah, Mike, I have a question, too.
I think we need to post it both ways.
For Lori, I have a question for you.
Sure, do you want me to come up? Because I was just gonna say, just come up.
Lori, please come up.
Thank you, Lori.
So, is our current HR person ready to do payroll and to do, by January 5th, even?
No.
So that's my huge concern, because once we lose Sharon, we're going to need somebody to do both jobs, like, to do both, technically, HR and treasurer. So even though we have an HR person, I think we should ask for both, because we're going to need somebody that's willing to train AJ still, correct?
Yeah, because I don't know how much AJ is actually leaning on this mentor she supposedly had in Belcher Town. I was not involved in that, I don't know what the deal was, how much she can, can't reach out to them. She is leaning heavy on Sharon.
Yeah, and I have concerns about that for Belcher Town, because HIPAA, secured email, she's sending social security numbers, data that needs to be to a secured email in Belcher Town. She just can't be using Outlook and things of that nature.
So Sharon did give us what looks like a two-months' notice. Unfortunately, with, when you add in three holidays, we're down to, you know, about a month.
Yeah.
As we found, the last time we explored this, we got no viable candidates. It's not pretty out there. I'm going on six months, actually, nine months, in another community, using a firm. It's cost that town, unfortunately, a small fortune to keep a treasurer in there. We're, we just appropriated another 60 grand, which will put us at $100,000 for this town to have a treasurer. And that is not viable for them, it's not viable for us. I have two potential candidates I can reach out to. They're both, they're not firms, but they're treasurers that do multiple towns. One of them does it on their own, one of them does it with, like, a sidekick. I don't know that we'll get a lot of onsite time. We'll get some, depending on what we kind of work out. They don't charge like a firm, though. They charge just as a regular old employee. I work with one of them.
So they could at least act as an interim?
They could work as an interim. The DLS recommends one very highly. He works in a handful of other towns in Western Mass, him and his sidekick. They each do a part of it. They're treasurer collectors, so it kind of works out, we don't need both. The other gentleman, he works alone. My firm works with him in West Hampton, so he does, has a good reputation with us. I don't personally work with him, because I don't do that community. I can reach out to both of them and see if either of them would be interested, and if this is even a feasible location for them, because we do need some sort of onsite time because someone needs to pick up the checks.
Right.
But unfortunately, as we saw from a few months ago when we attempted this before, we didn't get much in the terms of candidates that would have worked out. Our other option, obviously, is going with a firm, which have become incredibly pricey, and they are all backed up, the two firms that are known for treasurer work. They're behind schedule, and they're incredibly expensive. So I would suggest putting out an ad for both services, just to see kind of what we get, just because I am concerned that, you know, we may not have that kind of lean-on relationship with Belcher Town if she's leaning that heavy currently on Sharon.
Yeah, and even if we do, like I said, I have concerns about how we're gonna, if she does lean on Belcher Town, I have concerns on what that means.
Yeah, but you can, you can do all kinds of, get all kinds of support without transferring personal data.
Yeah, yeah, but at any point, we're not paying her, so at any point, she can just say, no, not answer her.
Right.
Yeah.
The mentor.
Yeah, the mentor. We're not going to pay her.
Right. No, I understand that, so.
So, yeah, how reliable is that mentorship going to be?
Right.
Okay. Well, thank you. So Karen? Advertise, 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 right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Number 14, 2026 liquor licenses.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 liquor licenses for Central Package Store, Bay Path Spirits, Rod and Gun Club, and Oak Home Brewing Company.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 15, signed fiscal year 2026 common vehicular licenses.
I'll make a motion that we sign the 2026 common veticular licenses for Rod and Gun Club, for the Brookfield Rod and Gun Club, Boswell Enterprises, Oak Home Farm Company, Cumberland Farms, Brookfield Congregational Church, Bay Path.